Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Yeah, there you go. Today is August 6, 2018, and you have found yourself in the Rowan County Commission meeting. We are honored that you are here today because we know it's not always easy for you to get here, and sometimes these meetings are boring. It doesn't look like today the meeting's going to be boring, so that's a good thing. Let me apologize for -- well, I won't apologize for him. County Commissioner -- County Manager Aaron Church is on vacation with his family, but he is dedicated enough. He has called in, and he is on the phone here. We've actually got a microphone bent down to the phone, so if he needs to interject something, he can. We appreciate him taking his family time, which we wish he hadn't, but appreciate the time that he has taken to be with us. Leslie is our Assistant County Manager. I told her earlier that if she wants to reorganize the whole county, today would be the day to do it, since Aaron's missing. But we start off our meeting, as always, with a couple of things. Chaplain Taylor will come forward, and he'll lead us in what is called a solemnizing prayer. And so you know, this is for the commissioners. This is a time for us to focus and begin to focus on those things that we have before us, and so he'll come and ask for wisdom as we act on behalf of the county. And following that, we'll have a pledge, so commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we come to you today, and thank for the privilege we have to call upon you today. We thank for County Commissioners, Lord, and the preparation they've made for this meeting. They're always prepared, and we thank for the work they do and the call they received upon their life to do what they do here by the elected people. We thank for everybody who's here today, Lord. We pray you'll just guide us and lead us, Lord. And again, we thank for Rowan County and the privilege to be a part of Rowan County, guide and direct them today, give them the wisdom they need today, and all the businesses conducted today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, and you've got a guest with you today. Would you like to introduce him to the group?
Yeah, this is my middle grandson, Andrew.
Well, An-
And he says he wants to be a chaplain of a parish one day. I said, "Oh, boy."
Oh, boy. Well, you're following good footsteps, Andrew. We're honored to have you here with us today. I asked him if he wanted to lead the pledge, and he said, "Uh-uh." So... All right, so commissioners, we've had the agenda provided. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes from July 2nd have been provided to us. Do we have any corrections to the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second? Thank you. Mike? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have probably the largest consent agenda I've ever seen. Madam Clerk, have we ever had a larger consent agenda, do you know? Madam, maybe? Okay. All right, so we have the consent agenda, items through A all the way through Z, and then we started back at Double A after that, and goes through AG. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, public comment. So we've got someone signed up for public comment, but we're also going to have a public hearing on the dog ordinance, so I just wanted to make sure I clear this up, because sometimes folks don't know when they're supposed to speak, but you can speak both times if you like. We have now, we're on that part of the agenda where you can speak during public comment, and we have one that has signed up. And then if you're here to talk about the animal, yeah, leash law, then you'll be given an opportunity to do it then. So I do have one that has signed up. You'll just wait until then? Okay, so then we'll move on, okay? All right, so we'll move directly to that item, and we'll ask Bob Pendergrass, our Animal Services Director, to come forward and to make a presentation for a public hearing for the proposed leash ordinance changes. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, just one slide is all I have to show here today, and this is basically our ordinance that we apply for restraint of non-vicious animals. There are different categories that, in some cases, we may have to declare an animal a dangerous animal, but this is just for non-vicious animals, restraint requirements for animals in Rowan County. And the red that you're seeing in here indicates the change that we're looking at making, and this is based on some requests to us from the Board of Commissioners and from citizens, basically to clarify that we do not intend to allow electronic control devices, such as correction collars or shock collars, as some people would call them, to be considered as restraint off of the owner's property. And that's what we're trying to do today, is that's the staff recommendation that we go with this language, and that we feel that that's an important way to go, because a non-physical restraint that doesn't attach the animal to the owner, in our experience and in our mind, does not adequately restrain that animal from being a public safety hazard.
Thank you, Bob.
That's basically all I want to say.
I got a question. Bob, does this somehow bring in the underground fence?
No, because we're talking about off of the owner's property.
Off of the owner's property.
We do allow underground fencing as restraint on people's property.
Okay.
But once the animal leaves the owner's property and they're out in a public venue, we're looking at a physical restraint that attaches the animal to the owner for public safety. And the reason is, is that electronic control devices really work well until you get to a point that the motivation for the animal is overcome by the fear of the device itself, and motivation can be a lot of different things in an animal's world. Some things are extremely important, and the desire to take on another animal. One of the big issues that we deal with within animal control, the things that we see the most bites occur to people are when animals are fighting each other, and people step in to try to break it up. And it represents a hazard not only to other pets, to have an animal not adequately restrained, but it also represents a danger to people. And that's what we're trying to address here.
Can I follow up on her question, because on letter B, right below this, it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to keep any animal unless it is restrained, whether on or off the owner or keeper's property."
That's correct, but restraint, if you read further down into the ordinance, restraint on owner's property in A says that sufficient restraint shall also include immediate supervision of an animal by a competent person when both are in the limits of the real property of the animal's owner or keeper.
Okay, so, okay. All right, gotcha.
Hey, Bob, if I remember correctly, this originally came up for someone that was, I guess, walking their dog in the city of Salisbury with some electronic collar. So is there anything the city will have to change in their ordinances, or this will supersede anything?
I mean, this should supersede anything within the county. If the city had a more strict ordinance, you know, they could go that route. Some cities and some jurisdictions don't allow, they have a maximum amount of length of leash, and they can go and do that. But this should cover the entire county.
So there's nothing they'll have to do from their-
There's nothing that they should have to do.
No, but I am in communication with the new city attorney, and we've gone back and revisited that original agreement. And while we enforce our ordinance everywhere in the county, because we're the only enforcement agency around, their ordinance is sort of still on their books, and actually, our agreement with them says that we'll work together to create a common ordinance that would be enforceable. But no, right now, we would enforce our ordinance in Salisbury, but we may do some cleanup work a little bit later after them, but we've been in communication about that.
And that's part of what this is, is that the language is originally what some person, one person might consider vague on this issue. We want to be very specific about it.
All right, any other questions for Bob?
I'd just like, Bob, to go down to parent H under penalty, and I was just curious as to when the fines were set.
I don't know. I know this was before my time, but I can find that out for you and get back with you.
Okay.
And we can discuss that. But it has been several years since fines have been changed.
Anything else for Bob? All right, Bob, don't go far, in case we need you again.
Thank you.
All right, so what we'll do now is we will open up the floor for a public hearing. I'll gavel ascend to that, and so if you are here and would like to speak on this issue, then just raise your hand. We'll recognize you and come forward. Yeah.
I'm Renee McNabb. I came and spoke, I guess, about eight weeks ago about this, and I really hope y'all will vote and pass this through. It's a little hazy on the Salisbury-Rowan County thing, so I don't know if I need to take that up with the city. No. Okay. Because this particular person in our neighborhood would probably push it, just like he has everything. And first, I want to say, between now and then, just last week, my dogs, two of my dogs, which are fairly large dogs, were pretty viciously attacked by these same dogs while we'd been awaiting this, flying across an empty, and it was an empty corner lot owned by the college. And it was a good minute and a half, almost two-minute attack before I saw a human. And I did kind of like what Mr. Pendergrass said, you know, I let go of my dogs' leashes at that point, because I had no control. This was a total of four dogs at this point, just having at it. But I do want to say thank you to Mr. Eds and to Mr. Pendergrass for immediately, I wrote a pretty emotional letter, because it was very, very, very upsetting. And this gentleman also has a couple of young teenagers that have a really great little business in our neighborhood. It's like everything we want our youngsters to do, business cards printed up, you know, dog walking, plant watering, leaf raking. And he had her walking the dog, and when I asked her, he told her to not use a regular leash. "I want you to use these things." And, you know, it just broke my heart. You know, here she's trying to do a good thing, and she was scared to death, and she lives behind us, and she loves our dogs. They come over and play. They jump over the fence, and they come play with our dogs, you know? But I just wanted to encourage you, our neighborhood has basically been held captive to a certain degree, as well as Catawba College, by these dogs. He gets in his car and drives around while the dogs are walking. He uses a Segway while the dogs are roaming free, uses teenagers that are listening to what he says, and I don't know how many attacks, but most of us, every time we go out to walk, and even that morning last week when my dogs were attacked, I'm like, every time, down the driveway, "Oh, please, please, don't let the dogs be out. Don't let the dogs be out." And that's just not what we want for any neighborhood, I would think. And so we've lost a lot of dog-walking traffic, which is also vital to reduce the criminal element when people drive through, and they see a lot of pedestrian people out. That really, I think, mentally deters them. I mean, I think it's statistics that it helps them, like, "Maybe I won't go into this neighborhood. There's a lot of people. I don't know who's going to turn the corner when I'm robbing the stealing that car," or whatever. But mostly, it's just, it's good for us to be out walking our dogs for exercise. It's good for the dogs. And I just, if I have a special friend in my neighborhood who's older, and she happened, if this had happened 30 seconds later, she would have been the person that had to encounter these dogs, and that would have just broken my heart, because she's older and her, she's already fallen once because of these dogs, and they would have just eaten her little dog. It would have been a horrible thing. So I really hope y'all will consider doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNabb. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Peggy Mills. As an animal advocate and as someone who works largely with dogs a lot of the time, and cats as well, but both in public and private places, this is a very good thing to pass. It can only be an encouragement for dog walkers and others of us to feel safer. So I think it's common sense, common courtesy, and it should be passed, because I understand how she feels, and none of us want that to happen when we're out with our dogs. The only thing that might be even better would be to limit it to a six-foot leash, as they do in some places, because I know that trainers I've worked with, people who are behaviorists with dogs, do recommend a six-foot leash, because you're able to control that dog better with your own person. But it's a good thing, so it should pass.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Anyone? Or if not, then we'll close the public hearing, and commissioners, do we have a motion to approve the proposed leash ordinance changes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you for your patience on this. I think I explained that things move slowly, unfortunately, but so, all good. Thank you. Tell your dogs we said hello. All right, the next item, public hearing for moratorium, ordinance for campgrounds and RV parks. Mr. Muir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this ordinance is in response to the commission's adoption of the resolution of intent they adopted at the July 2nd Commission meeting, which established the call for a public hearing. This has been advertised as required by statute. So this, real quickly, is the ordinance, trying to break it down into what I think it means. In the preamble, we state that the Board of Commissioners does have the authority to govern Rowan County, and also has the authority to enact zoning and development regulations, and to also modify them from time to time. Statute 153A-348 specifies the requirements for establishing a moratorium, and therefore sets out the procedural elements that need to be included in this ordinance, and this ordinance does satisfy those requirements. There's a temporary ordinance reference. Again, this will not be one that makes it into the Rowan County Code, because it is a temporary ordinance. We have a problem statement and a course of action. The rationale for enacting the moratorium is fourfold. The Rowan County zoning ordinance has not been updated since its original adoption in 1998, as it applies to campgrounds and RV parks. The commission has vocally placed a renewed emphasis on High Rock Lake. There have been several concerns from lake residents and persons proximate to campgrounds about their secondary impacts, and neither one of the land use plans for the county, and I guess I should say the three, because we do have one for the South Rowan Corridor, but none of them consider or provide any guidance as it relates to campgrounds or RV parks. Any questions so far? Okay. Applicability, the moratorium applies to all properties in the Rowan County jurisdiction seeking to create or expand campgrounds or RV parks. The moratorium will allow us an opportunity to study the land use implications associated with these land uses, and if it's adopted, the moratorium will be in effect from August 6th to February 6th, 2019. Schedule of actions is exactly what it is. This is the anticipated actions that will be taken by the planning board, staff, and eventually the Board of Commissioners during this six-month moratorium. We are in this phase of study currently. Committee B of the planning board will study information from various sources, including the building code, environmental health, and others that relate to establishing or maintaining an RV park. Committee and staff will prepare text amendments to the zoning ordinance in October. Committee B will provide its recommendations to the planning board for consideration. In November, planning staff will present those draft recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for direction and guidance. During that November to December timeframe, any feedback that we receive from this board will go back to the planning board and be incorporated into those draft text amendments, if necessary. In December, the planning board will conduct its courtesy hearing on the draft text amendments and provide recommendation to the commissioners. And in January, the commissioners will schedule the hearing on the recommended text, and in January 22nd, we anticipate, if not sooner, the Board of Commissioners could conduct their public hearing to consider adopting these amendments. The effective intermination date should be self-explanatory, but again, we think this would be applicable through, from today until February 6th, unless these actions occur sooner. One other bit of information, as we have inventoried them in the county, we've identified 21 different campgrounds, and we think there are about 574 campsite spaces. So I'll be glad to answer any other questions. If not, you can conduct your public hearing and move forward, as typical.
So Ed, some understanding is if we do nothing, February 7th, whatever is in law now will take place, it'll just revert back to where we're at right now? If it doesn't come up before us at all-
Yes, yes. If nothing happens, the ordinance remains in effect.
So is there any, will this stop anybody from what they're doing currently? Is there anybody in the middle of building a campground? This is going to stop-
We have not had any applications for a campground or RV park. There is, there has been a position that they have taken that action, and I have responded that we have not received anything from building inspections, environmental health, or from the planning department in the way of a campground application. And so like other decisions that are made at the administrative level, that is challengeable to the zoning board of adjustment. Now, quite frankly, and I'll defer to the county attorney, but if you, as a board, opted to take the position that somebody that's in that in-between or nebulous stage is vested, then certainly they would not be subject to this moratorium. But as I read the ordinance and the procedures that have come to pass, my current opinion is that they are not grandfathered or vested. Does that answer your question?
Ed has issued an administrative opinion to Randy Reamer, attorney on behalf of a property owner, who asserted that they had begun the process. After researching and speaking and interviewing different departments, including his own, Ed determined that there was no process, no application pending that would be affected by this. That is an issue that they can appeal to the zoning board of adjustment for determination separate and apart from this. What Ed also said is if you guys determine that they had vested rights to continue, meaning they may not have technically had an application in, but you think they had done enough to have rights that vested, you could determine that and exempt them from any new changes, if that's what you determined, if that issue came before you. But at this point in time, there were no formal applications submitted for a change in use or an expansion of a use in Rowan County that we could determine would meet the standards that you would have to meet.
Okay.
And we'll be glad to share that opinion if you want to see it. We can email it to you. We'll be glad to share it.
I'm just a little confused. Help me understand, then, we have a moratorium going on now?
As soon as we announce the public hearing, everything sort of stops.
Okay.
And so that's what we're picking up, that date, that everything stops.
Okay, so we have nothing-
And so if someone had submitted an application last week, we would say it's pending whether or not you adopt this moratorium. If you don't adopt the moratorium today, we would process it with everything else.
Okay, so the list is basically clean, clear?
A moratorium is designed to just sort of protect the status quo, just sort of freeze it right here, exactly where we are, and give us a chance to kind of address it, review it, see if we need to change it. If we need to change it, that still doesn't prevent people from submitting applications, and that's something we don't need to lose sight of here. It doesn't prevent people unless, because you can't just ban the use. But anyway, we'll see what the impact is if you guys adopt the moratorium and then adopt any ordinance changes. If you don't change, if you don't change the ordinance, we take in the applications and process them. If you do adopt changes, we'll take them in under the new standards. But anyway, yes, there was a position asserted that we are dealing with, with Randy Reamer, who's the attorney for the property owner. But we've issued an opinion that they did not do enough to be considered as having submitted an application for the use.
Any other questions for Ed? All right, if not, then we will have a public hearing, so we'll open the floor now to a public hearing, and if you'd like to speak, then just come forward, and we'd like to hear from you. Anyone? All right, if we don't have anyone that'd like-
...to build a campground.
Yep, yep.
If you'd be willing to ask any questions.
Yeah, come on forward. Yep, identify yourself, and-
My name is Jerry Holzhouser. Through inheritance, we are the owners of Lakefront Campground. You'll tell you exactly where it's at. If you boat, if you're on Bringley Ferry Road and you put your boat in it in the wildlife, or you walk down the ramp of the wildlife and you swim straight across, you're going to be at our campground. We own the property there. Crossing the bridge, up past my mother's home, and the campground goes back into the thing. We have bathrooms, we have septic tanks, all registered in the county. Everything's legit. But if you have any kind of questions, any of you got, if your brain's spinning and you want to ask me a question, I'm willing to try to give you a good answer, if you have anything you want to ask me about what's going on here. My big question is, is, I'll go ahead and say it, I think a moratorium is a little over the top. I've seen, I'm actually attending these planning meetings, and the first one was excellent. The second one's going to be even better when the health and environmental people and the, that would be Wednesday, and the fire marshal is attending. I think a moratorium is a slight bit over the top. I don't, I wasn't aware of somebody trying to put in a campground currently. Was about that, but I'm looking at rules such as roads, and when we put our restroom facilities in, what I had to do, I'm just wondering if a moratorium might be the route you want to go, or do you have enough stuff already to keep somebody from putting something like that in until this committee decides whether they want to enhance the rules or not enhance the rules? Not a big fan of piling rules up on top of rules, because all that does is make your, make the people that's got to enforce them, that makes them, you know, in an easy way- way to explain it, that makes them least willing to go out and enforce the rules that they already have, in my opinion. So sometimes, maybe adding more rules to what you've already got, maybe might not be the answer. But that's all I really had, I had to say about it. Do any of you ladies or gentlemen have any questions for me, in reference to campgrounds? That's going to you?
Just one, one, one quick question. How large is your campground?
Oh, this is a small family. It's 30, it's 30 units. They have people rent by the year, and they have a campsite there with a, most people have a deck and an awning. We don't allow screen and porches, but they have a deck and an awning. We have boat slips, aluminum boat slips, we have boat landings, we have that piers and stuff that Cube Hydro charges us a nice price to have it on their property. But, but it's 30 units. And I have considered expanding, but when, with the road rules and the environmental rules, and right now, what I thought I could reap from that by expanding, it just wasn't economically, just wasn't economically feasible. I have a nice road, gravel it every year, but it's not 18-foot wide. I don't have a highway, I don't have a highway through there. And I think I've got to have, if I want, I've got to have an 18-foot wide road with six inches of impacted gravel. That ain't cheap, especially when you get bulldozers and stuff down there. And then I've got to, if I expand, I've got to add bathroom facilities, and I understand that. You want to be, you want to have a place that's environmentally healthy. I have no problems with that, but, but 30, 30, 30 units.
Thank you.
30 units.
Any other questions for Mr. Holshouser? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak? No? All right, if not, then we'll close the hearing, and we have a discussion. I'll just say, from my perspective, we filled this room a few months ago on a zoning issue that we had with folks who were concerned that a campground was going to be built next to a residence. So that really brought this to a head, brought this to the forefront. And knowing that it's been 1998 since we looked at this ordinance, and every other community along High Rock Lake has done some upgrading of their rules, piers, that we just needed to take a peek. It could be that the Planning Board comes back and says, "We're good." But it certainly, I think, is incumbent on the board to make sure that we're protecting all of the citizens and taxpayers of the county. So that's what our main concern is. Any other comments? All right, do we have a motion to pass the moratorium ordinance for campgrounds and RV parks?
So moved.
Six months?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Erin Poplin, for FSW 01-18.
So today, we've got the public hearing for family subdivision waiver 0118, for Kimberly Nash and her family, who are here in the audience tonight in the back here. And this is for a property at 3580 Deal Road, tax parcel 240084. So we'll take a look at the property out here. It's a 46-acre piece of land, which is this highlighted in red here. And the family is looking to divide that two times. The first time, we'll be cutting the back 16 acres off here in an exception, which can be approved administratively. And then the second time, dividing the remainder into five family lots, which cannot be done without a family subdivision waiver. So taking a look at the front here, you can kind of see what the area looks like on Deal Road out here. It's mostly rural with some houses mixed in. And then here, we have the actual subdivision, the preliminary plat. So we take a look back here, this is going to be cut off in the exception, and it's these lots here that have to be approved as part of the subdivision waiver process. Now, normally, administratively, we can approve three lots on top of a residual lot for a family subdivision, but this has four lots and a residual, so it requires the waiver. And this particular division is currently all owned by the family, and these are all siblings who are splitting the lots between each other, so they would meet the definition of an immediate family. So with a family subdivision waiver, there are four criteria to look at, and that's the nature of the division, and that's the five new parcels that would be created, the existing land in the vicinity, and that's residential and agricultural, the number of persons to reside or work on the proposed subdivision, and that is all the Good family with Randy Good, Joy Milton, Sarah Campbell, Tim Good, and Kimberly Nash. And then the fourth thing is the traffic in the area, and Deal Road has a capacity of 13,600 vehicles, and as of 2016, they had 2,300 average daily vehicles. So just a few things to remember, is that we can do three new lots administratively, while this would make four lots and a residual. Lot six will be done as an exception, so while there are six on that preliminary plat, we're really only looking at doing a five-lot subdivision. The family subdivision requirements are still going to be put in place on this, if you do approve it, so they will have to go through. It will be notarized that they understand that these lots are for their building only, and that they can't just sell these outside their immediate family. And we have had plenty of conversations with the applicant, letting her know that that will be the case. And then procedurally, you just have to approve, deny, or table this request. If you have any questions, I'm here, as well as the applicant and her family.
I have a question for you. Is there any provision in this ordinance that allows a specific right-of-way for each one of these lots? My concern is, it looks like they're landlocked to each other.
Yeah, well, the family subdivision, it might be a little hard to see here, but it does require a 20-foot easement to go from a state-maintained road back to each lot.
So there is a right-of-way?
Yeah, that's, this right here, it's a little bit light purple. That's just the color the surveyor went with. But it does attach to each of these lots back there.
Okay, as long as they got access, that's my concern.
Yes.
Erin, I have a question. In the case of, say, death or divorce or some financial situation, what are the rules as far as those properties being sold?
Typically, the way we look at it is, once a house has been built on there, then it's met its general purpose. But in the event where, say, one of them has passed away, if it would go to an immediate family member, then we could just get them to sign a new family subdivision waiver. If it needs to be sold outside the family, we kind of look at those on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
Are we changing any of the zoning on the 16 acres in the back?
No, this will all stay rural agricultural.
Gotcha.
All right, Erin, don't go far.
All right.
All right, would the applicant, any of the applicants like to speak? Anything you want to add? If you want to come forward?
No, sir. We, I think Erin has covered everything we asked, or everything that we're asking for, so I don't really think we have anything to add.
Okay. All right, thank you. Who's getting the biggest lot? That's probably the favorite child. Oh, you are?[1591.54][1591.54](LAUGHING). The oldest? She threw you right under the bus, didn't she?[1597.13][1597.13](LAUGHING). That's funny. All right, well, we'll open the floor to any public comment there might be. Is there anyone like to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the floor. And then, do we have a motion to approve FSW 01-18?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Erin. Thank you, ladies. Good luck. We'll expect a big party when the houses are built.[1631.42][1631.42](LAUGHING).
Three, five family members that want to live around each other nowadays.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
As long as they don't end up in the same house.
Yeah. All right, we've got board appointments, and so Airport Advisory Board, we've got an opening. Let's see, Randy Baker's applied for reappointment. Do we have a motion to approve Randy for reappointment?
So moved.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've got a vacancy for a member of the business community. We have three applicants. Do we have a motion for?
I have a motion that we approve Erin Goss for that position.
I'll second that.
All right, have a motion and a second and a third. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. City of Kannapolis ETJ Boyd Harden has applied for reappointment. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, let me go through the, so for JCPC, John Basinger has applied to fill the juvenile defense attorney vacancy, and Tressie McLean-Hickey has applied to fill the director of mental health vacancy, and Brandon Lynn has applied for reappointment as a member of the public. Do we have a motion to accept those three?
So moved.
803, second.
All right, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Local Emergency Planning Committee Bobby Brown has applied to fill the elected official vacancy. A motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lock Volunteer Fire Department Raven McMillan Jr. applied to fill a vacancy on the Fire Department Commissioners Board. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rowan Public Library Board Betty Mickel applied to fill an at-large position. Motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two at-large vacancies, Rowan Transit System Committee Charles Michael Julian has applied to fill one of the at-large. We have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Zoning Board of Adjustment Norman Ryblin applied for reappointment in the Zoning Board of Adjustment as an alternate member. Motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
General public, we have 32 vacancies. One, two, three, four, five, six. I see eight of you in here that could fill 32 of those vacancies, so maybe the Salisbury Post could put out something about all the opportunities that we have. I know you've done that in the past, we appreciate that, but we've got lots of opportunities to serve. And that is it. It's amazing. We had a huge agenda today. We got through in less than 45 minutes. Well done. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.